All right. Good afternoon, everyone. The regular council, regular committee of the whole meeting is called to order at four o'clock. Council would like to acknowledge the Yuculat thought on whose traditional territories the District of Yuculat operates. Audience members and delegates are advised that this proceeding is being video recorded and broadcast on YouTube and Zoom, which may store data on foreign servers. There are two late items. Everyone has that. May I have a motion to amend the October sixteenth, twenty twenty-five regular committee of the whole meeting agenda by adding the late items titled Island Health and Wild Pacific Trail as items number six point ten and six point eleven, and to renumber the remaining items accordingly?
I'll just, I'll make that motion, but I want to just strike Island Health because there's the no show for it.
We'll get to that.
Okay.
Yeah. So you're making that motion?
Second.
Oh, I think Counselor Mafte beat you. Sorry. All in favor? None opposed? That carries. May I have a motion to amend the October sixteenth, twenty twenty-five regular committee of the whole meeting agenda by moving item six point eight, West Coast Community Resources Society to item six point two, and to renumber the remaining items accordingly?
Summit.
Counselor Mafte? Counselor Noel, all in favor? None opposed? That carries. And may I have a motion to adopt the October sixteenth, twenty twenty-five regular committee of the whole meeting agenda as amended? Counselor Hor?
Second.
Ooh, tie. Counselor Mafte, all in favor? None opposed? That carries. There's one set of meeting minutes for adoption. Are there any errors or omissions?
One noted.
Okay, seeing none.
Move adoption.
Move, okay. Thank you, Counselor Hor. Counselor Noel seconds, all in favor? None opposed? That carries. We have one report item this evening, which is grants in aid and in-kind contributions. This verbal report will be presented by the Director of Community Services, Ms. Fortune.
Thank you, Mayor. Through the mayor. Can you hear me okay?
No.
No. Is that better?
Yeah, I think you have to get really close to that one.
Really? Is that better?
Much better.
There we go. Okay. Now I can read and see and all that good stuff. So some, I just want to go over some housekeeping dates and requirements for the upcoming Grants in Aid program, just so that everybody's clear and aware of what's going on. So that if you've had a twenty twenty-five grant in aid contribution, you're required to do a report and it must be submitted in order to be funding eligible for twenty twenty-five, sorry, twenty twenty-six. And it's got to be in by December fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. If you do not have a form, just let me know and I will send one to you. I've also printed some forms on the back table, so I will be following up with all the community groups in terms of forms, and that will be one of them. So that is on its way. And if you have any questions on what's required, just please do give me a shout on that one. So Grants in Aid for twenty twenty-six, the District of Yuculat provides grants and aids to financially assist community groups. You're well aware. This year's budget is twenty-one thousand seven hundred and fifty, or twenty-two, as it were. The district also provides in-kind contributions towards rentals and leases of facilities in a similar amount as well. So the presentation, so your Grants in Aid application must be in by December fifteenth. There is a presentation to the Committee of the Whole on February third, twenty twenty-six, and then council will make their decision by the end of the month. And I believe that council meeting is February twenty-six, Mr. Chow? Yeah, based on the schedule. So some of the criteria highlights, and these are just highlights, they're not the whole thing. If you need more information, just do let me know. Just the criteria is it's not-for-profit community organization that operates within the District of Yuculat. It's, the project must be completed within twelve months of receipt, and it's social service to Yuculat residents that are not overlapping already existing services. Ineligible proposals will be things like funding for sports organizations, commercial organizations, or duplicating projects that are already being done with, provided by the District of Yuculat. Proposals from individuals, and you are required to submit your final report. Applications can be received at our website at www.yuculat.ca, or you can just send me a note and I'll send you an application, but I will be sending off all the applications. So fundings must be used for what's been proposed, and they must be acknowledged, the District of Yuculat must be acknowledged on any forms of posters or advertising. And if any questions, please just reach out to me and ask. So your big deadlines are December fifteenth, and then the presentation on February third in twenty twenty-six. Any questions?
Any questions from council? No, I think we've been at this rodeo before.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Before we begin with the delegations, council will have to pass a procedural motion to allow for more than two delegations on the agenda today. So I will move that section eighteen point three of the District of Yuculat Council Procedure Bylaw, number thirteen hundred, twenty twenty-one, be suspended for the duration of the October sixteenth, twenty twenty-five regular committee of the whole meeting to allow for more than two delegations on the agenda. Do I have a second, or Counselor Hor seconds? Any further discussion? All in favor? None opposed? That carries. All right, we have several grants in aid and in-kind contribution applications on the agenda. Each applicant will have an opportunity to present. Please limit your presentations to five minutes, as we have a fairly large agenda. The first delegation is from West Coast Community Resources Society. Lori Hannah, Executive Director, will be presenting. You'll need a microphone there because people on Zoom won't be able to hear you. I think it's, there's one for you.
That's really cool. Thank you, everyone, for that accommodation. I'm really grateful for the accommodation, too. I really appreciate it. Let's see, is this? I think this should just go. Here we are. Okay. Oh, no. I'm curious. Let me just see. Oh, there we go. Yeah, so this is an animation that the team put together. We were chosen, and through the mayor and council, thank you, thank you, guys. WCS was chosen through Eva, which is Ending Violence Association, to create an animation which blends two aspects, it's gender-based violence and substance use. So I believe Florence will send this to you guys after the, after the fact. And, and it's an animation that myself, Caitlin, our personnel program manager, and our substance use outreach worker, Suzie, who were at the time, spent the last year working on it. And it's, it's basically, it's kind of creating a culture shift within our society to build like more sensitivity to working with individuals that have experienced gender-based, gender-based violence and also use substance. Yeah, so it was, yeah, a lot of, a lot of script developing, a lot of editing. It's really neat to see our language and words. And basically, this is, this is to be shared with everyone in society. It's basically to educate society on how we view individuals differently and to create those kind of, that kind of culture shift. So we're really excited about that. And once we get the credits up and everything, it'll go on our website. And some other highlights I just wanted to share over the years. So we're really grateful for the grant in aid that we get for, one, one activity is our holiday lunch. This last year, we had over two hundred and twenty people participate in our holiday lunch, and the space is donated in kind, which we're really grateful for. We also, part of that, that's part of our community outreach program. And then also with that program, we have our, our community lunch program. And this, over this last year, we served over eight, one hundred, uh, one thousand eight hundred and twenty-five lunches, so. And that we did in the space, which we also get, we, is also part of our grant in aid. So a couple of other highlights is our transition house supported twenty-four women and twelve children this year. We just completed a CISM training in a housing where we trained twenty-two individuals. And CISM is a critical and sense stress management team that we have. And basically, we're creating a regional team where anyone who's experienced a death or near death can reach out to our team and get kind of immediate support. And then we also have another success this year was our Sexual Assault Services Program. We now have access to the hospital to support women going and men going through a forensic nurse exam. And so that's really new at the Tofino General Hospital. And we also are really trying to spread the word about the fact that we're a third-party reporting host agency, which means we can anonymously take reports to the RCMP for sexual assaults. Yeah, and just really a lot of gratitude for the collaboration and support that, that the District of Yuculat provides WCS over the years. So I'll also just end by handing everyone our annual report here.
Thank you, Lori. Thank you.
You can leave one here for Counselor Anderson. He's just said today.
Any questions for Lori from council? Counselor Noel?
Yeah, it's been a while there. Is the lunch is still on Thursday?
Yeah.
Okay.
Eleven thirty to one.
Every week.
Uh huh. We have lots of leftover today, too, in particular, for anyone's.
I used to be in my track, in my little circuit, so I'm glad it's going and it's still well-used. Co-op is still donating all the food?
They are, actually. So we're really grateful for them as well, the district. Yeah, the Yuki Co-op has been phenomenal.
You guys do important work, so it's easy to support you, so. That's my big one question, is just the luncheon.
Great. You gonna start attending again?
Well, maybe.
Yeah?
Thursdays, you know, my days get busy, but it's a, it's a good thing, so.
Yeah, yeah, it's been really great. It's been, we've had about forty people, up to forty people, weekly, which is, yeah, phenomenal.
And the hours, for a reminder?
Eleven thirty to one. And then we have our community drop-in after that, and that's been really well-received. Yeah, and that's like till two thirty.
And how many people volunteer for the lunch?
Oh, my goodness. So, well, weekly, it's two, it's three people every week. And so I think we have up to almost twenty volunteers just for that program. So it's, yeah, so well-supported. It's, we're really grateful for it.
Great, thank you. All right, thank you for your presentation. I look forward to seeing the, the final video with the.
Where does it make all the difference?
Sure.
Thanks so much, everybody.
Thank you. The second delegate on the agenda today is Natasha Bernard, representing the Yuculat and Area Childcare Society. Ms. Bernard is the daycare director. She's unable to present today, so Ms. Fortune, Director of Community Services, will read a letter from her.
I will, thank you. Through the mayor. Hello, I'm mayor and council. Unfortunately, I'm unable to attend today's meeting in person due to illness. It is the start of the season in daycare, which coughs and cold are very much a part of daily life. I'm sure they are. Firstly, I would like to thank you for the annual grant we received to cover the rent of the Yuculat Children's Center. Without this generous grant, it would be impossible for us to serve such a valuable service to our community. We operate four programs, the group daycare, the multi-age programs run out of Yuculat's Community Center, and Little Beans Infant Toddlers Center runs out of the old tourism Yuculat building owned by the Co-op. And lastly, the after-school program, which runs out of the UAC Hall. I was able to add another staff to the after-school program in September, so we will be able to increase the program available spaces to twenty-four. We are currently providing daycare to sixty children and fifty-nine families. As of today, I have sixty-two children on the waitlist, with fifty-four of those waiting for a spot in Little Beans. December is fast approaching, with this year's Yuculat and Area Childcare Society will be hosting Breakfast with Santa on December thirteenth. More details to follow, but we're very excited to be putting this event on. We are also hoping to put on a Christmas concert, date to be determined, and hope you will be able to attend and allow our little ones to entertain you. Kind regards, Natasha Bernard, daycare director.
Thank you. I, I attended their AGM back in the summer, and the kids put on a pretty great performance for that as well, so I look forward to the Christmas one. I guess there's no questions from council for Ms. Fortune. The next delegation on the agenda today is from Tarni Jacobson, representing the Pacific Rim Hospice Society. And she will be joining us via Zoom.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. I have a presentation to share. I'll just share my screen now. Can everybody see my screen?
Yes, we can.
So, thank you for the opportunity to present today. I'm just wanting to give you a little update on what Pacific Rim Hospice Society is up to these days. We are a registered Canadian charity. We've been operating since nineteen ninety-four as a, officially as a nonprofit society. And our society was a grassroots, had a grassroots beginning, as there was a, a response to some young mothers who died in this region. And a group of people got together and decided to create a hospice. So our mission is to enhance the quality of life for individuals and families in the Pacific Region, Rim Region, during illness, injury, death, and grief through education and compassionate care. We are your care community. We operate in ten west coast communities. Our board members, we have a small but mighty team. Alexandra Moore is our chair, Anita Taveras is our vice chair, Paula Robertson is our treasurer, Sonia is our secretary, and Victoria is our director-at-large. We have a lovely staff team here. We also have a group of contractors who are not noted in the picture, but are equally as amazing. We have five main programs that we operate. Our Pacific Rim Better at Home, caregiver support program, which is very new, and our social prescribing program with our community connector, also a new program this year. And then we have our grief and bereavement support and our end-of-life support. So starting with our Better at Home program, it's providing non-medical home supports for any adults fifty-five years or better, and services very niche community, but generally speaking, they're friendly visiting with trained volunteers, local transportation to medical and non-medical appointments, social programs, et cetera. We do light housekeeping, light yard work, light home maintenance. We provide social meals, home meal deliveries. We assist folks going on walks and many other programs. New this year, we are caregiver support program. We have a new staff member, Claire Gordon, from Yuculat, who is our coordinator, and she is providing this program in various communities, but looking for caregivers to support them. We're doing a needs assessment currently, finding out, you know, what the needs or caregiver, of caregivers are. We know that there are many, many caregivers in the region who, you know, are so, you know, full in terms of their caregiving that they probably don't even have time to reach out. But we are offering support groups, song circles, one-on-one support, walking groups. So pretty much whatever people are interested in, we are helping make that happen. We also are doing our new social prescribing program. So this, we have a new staff member, Kristy Gunther, and she is, it's an early intervention tool designed to help elders and older adults who might feel isolated, face wellness challenges, or feel disconnected from our community. And this program supports mental and physical health, addresses barriers that may come from living at home, and assists with confidence and independence for folks. So this program, our community connector can, there's three main aspects to the program. We are connecting service providers together, anyone who works with older adults and elders in the region. Our next service provider meeting is in November, just to identify, you know, areas for collaboration, gaps, barriers for service, and also, you know, all the things we're doing well so far. The next is working one-on-one with folks who could use a community connector, helping navigate programs and services, or, or the healthcare system, or any, anything, really. Perhaps someone would like a wellness plan, you know, discovering what their values and needs are. And then our connector, Kristy, will help them reach their goals, whether it's attending more social programs, or arts, arts and crafts programs, exercise, whatever, whatever the case may be. Yeah, and then I'm going to move on to our social meal program. So we partner with the District of Yuculat's Recreation Department to do a Cooking with Purpose class in Yuculat, and then deliver the, the meals that are made at the class to folks who could benefit. We started this program in Tofino, a year and a half, two years ago, almost, with the District of Tofino and Eat West Coast from Clacko Bys for Trust. And basically, the social meals at the Smile Program weekly get packaged. weekly, get packaged up and frozen, and then delivered to those in need. So really successful program. And yeah, we're expanding it. Currently, we know there's obviously a really great soup program that happens in Ukuleid where the West Coast Community Resources, so we're not looking to duplicate. But we are partnering with Forest Glen to help some of their residents to make sure they're eating well, and also in Tloukuaik communities as well. We do our grief support, of course. That's probably the, one of the biggest programs that we offer. So circles of support. We have one-on-one support with staff and trained volunteers. We have our youth grief counselor. And we also provide the Seven Weeks Shelter in a Storm Grief Group for adults. We provide Trees of Remembrance and a windbox, sort of opportunities for people to write notes to their loved ones. This windbox is located near Forest Glen in Ukuleid at St. Jack's Park, and we thank Richard Norwood for creating this beautiful art, art piece. This is Jen Scott. She's our registered clinic counselor. She works with youth thirteen to twenty-one and their loved ones. She provides grief counseling, one-to-one. She does education for young people and their families, and she supports the land-based learning program at Ukuleid Secondary once a week, and also goes to a house at up in the school, once a week for group, group support and lunches. And then here is our current program, Shelter in a Storm Grief Group. We're looking for participants for this online group. Starts October thirtieth to December eleventh, so six-thirty to eight Thursdays on Zoom. So feel free to register if anybody's interested by October twentieth. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Tarnie. Any questions for Tarnie from council? Comments? I, I believe last year you were the recipient of the Hundred Women Who Care donation, right?
We sure were. That was amazing. We received ten thousand nine hundred dollars from the Hundred Women Who Care event in Ukuleid. And that program helped actually hire our grief counselor, Jen Scott. So that in combination with the vital grant from CBT, we were able to start up our program again after a short pause, based on lack of funding. So that was a really great, great boost for us. Jen has been a really welcome staff team member and doing amazing work in the community. So we're super grateful.
Great to hear. Awesome. Any other comments from council? No? Okay, thanks for your presentation, Tarnie.
Thank you.
Next, we will hear from the Clockup Biosphere Trust. Rebecca Heritz will be presenting. Welcome, Rebecca.
There we go. Hi, everyone. I'm Rebecca from the Clockup Biosphere Trust. And yeah, I wanted to take a moment, first of all, to thank you for the grant and aid for our celebration on September twentieth. It was the anniversary of the biosphere, and we had just an amazing day with a really great turnout and amazing group of volunteers, even in spite of the weather. It was really, just lovely to see folks come together and celebrate what it means to be a biosphere, people and nature all working together. And a big thank you to Abby for being on the core team, helping with the planning, and to Barb and Public Works for really, like, going the extra mile with helping to supply all the different pieces that we needed to make the day a success. So big, huge thank you. And then also, thank you for collaborating on the FCM grant for climate adaptation planning. Really excited about all the work that Colin was able to do with the team and see where those applications go. We have a couple of grant opportunities open right now. We have the Lifelong Learner Award, which is for students who've been out of high school for three years and are continuing their studies in some way. So like a mature student award, we'd call it, and that's fifty-five hundred dollars. And it's the third time we've offered that grant. So it's been really, really well-received and lots of interest. And then we also have the Youth-led Program Grant, so smaller grants for projects that youth are envisioning and planning themselves, or working maybe with youth support workers or other organizations to carry out. But this small support that helps them realize their ideas. And I wanted to share a short update on the Biosphere Center. We almost have our building permit. I've been saying that for a while, but I think you're all familiar with the challenges that those processes can bring. I think we've completed all of the checkboxes for the District of Tofino, and our archaeological permit is out for review, and we have our BC Hydro design. So all of those permitting and approvals pieces are nearing completion. The big missing piece of the puzzle is funding from the province. And so you've seen some requests for letters of support as we continue to work with them. And you know, it's tricky times in terms of that, but we know that we have raised twelve and a half million dollars that will go into the community, and we hope that's an attractive invitation to them to support and help to activate that money. And I wanted to give a shout-out, lastly, to our volunteers that are appointed by the District of Ukuleid to sit on the CBT. So Sarah Evelina is really engaged on the board, and Claire Stone is her alternate. And then we recently posted an at-large position, and we had several folks from Ukuleid submit letters of interest. And so we actually have a couple more people joining the board. So Ukuleid's really well-represented. That's it for me.
Great. Thank you for your update. You mentioned the Youth-led Project Grant. How much is that for?
About a thousand dollars. We try to keep them small and spread them around.
Great. Questions? Comments? I believe we've, we've agreed to write your letter of support, so that's coming your way?
Thank you very much.
I bet. No? Okay, thanks for your presentation, Rebecca.
Thank you.
The next delegation on the agenda is from the Ukuleid Aquarium. Laura Griffith-Cochran, Director, will be presenting. Welcome, Laura.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for your support. So with the grant and aid that we received, we did a number of, of projects. We provided language honorariums and sent our team over to learn Natchalnith with Geneva Tucci, which we're doing again this year. It's been wonderful, so that not only can we have Natchalnith language in the aquarium, but we can actually pronounce the words that we're representing. It's really great. We also provided seasons passes for all of the seniors that are in Forest Glen, as well as all of the childcare centers. And we had a reoccurring storytime every Wednesday this year, which is a program which we started last year. And some of the groups came every single week, except for a couple weeks when it was really bad. So that was really great, lovely to see all of the kids. We also were working on lowering cost barriers so that the local schools could come into the aquarium more and use it more as a local resource. And we are currently working with the Living on the Land group. So they are coming in, some of them every week. And then the Hartwood Homeschool Group is working with the aquarium, is working with Anna, who's managing our outreach programs, and doing programs with her. They were in, doing a seaweed talk, which was really fun. And then I'm gonna do a quick update on the aquarium. We've had the most busy season ever. It has been bonkers and really, really great. So coming out of COVID, our visitation jumped to about fifty thousand visitors a year, and we're on track to see sixty thousand people this year. So that means that we've increased our staffing levels, which has been great. We're now at twelve year-round people. We had five summer staff, four of which were high school students, so it was really wonderful to have those opportunities to give opportunities to local youth. And that's just about eight hundred thousand dollars in wages going into the community. So really stoked with that. And then we have our Healthy Harbor program, which we're running, connecting with people about what they value in the harbor and how we would assess different areas for being healthy. And we ran the Salmon Trail again this summer in partnership with Redfish Restoration, and that saw in the thousands of visitors. So, so nice to get people engaged in what responsible tourism means and how we reduce impacts on local ecosystems, which is why we all live here. That's it for me. Any questions?
Thanks, Laura. You have an event coming up, I think.
We do. Our annual fundraiser is on November eighth. Thank you so much for wanting me. And it will be at the Ukuleid Aquarium. The theme is Weird and Wonderful. Please come and dress up. We have band. We've got lots of community support, really good door prizes, and a silent auction. Yeah.
And how do we dress up?
Okay, backstory. About twenty years ago, when I was in university, there was a Tumblr account called Bowie Brankia, which would, some glorious person matched up nudibrank photos with, that's sea slugs, with David Bowie outfits. And so we were gonna go with that theme, and then one of our staff point, members pointed out that we are nerds and we're old and no one's gonna know what that is. So now it's weird and wonderful. So just dress up however the ocean inspires you.
Thank you. I just wanted you to tell that backstory. That's awesome. Any questions or comments from council? No? Okay, thank you for your presentation. The next delegation on the agenda is from the Ukuleid and Area Historical Society, but I believe that they have canceled. Is that correct? So the next delegation on the agenda is from Pacific Rim Arts Society. Kelly Deacon, Executive Director, will be presenting. Welcome, Kelly.
Nope, there we go. I think everybody knows who I am. Kelly Deacon, BD for PRAS. I want to say thank you to the district for the support for 2025. The in-kind support was greatly needed, as far as our events going, at the community center, as well as the monetary value. This never gets easier. I'm not a good public speaker. Pardon me. Also, just want to thank the district for all the support over the past four years of me being the Executive Director. I will be leaving this position December fifteenth, and Robert Guzdil will be taking over. We were hoping he would be here with me today, so he could be introduced to everybody, but he is working. He may run in late. I'm not really sure. We'll see how that goes. So just to run down on our year. This year, we were celebrating fifty-five years, so there was a lot of events happening. Starting January was Missoula Children's Theater. We do get the Hall in Kind from the district for that. Missoula Children's Theater has been going on for over thirty years, and we greatly appreciate the ongoing support. The community looks as forward to that event as does the art society. We had a hundred and forty-nine people attend the two live performances for Missoula, so that was pretty awesome. January, we also had the secondary school students doing an art show with music by Berlin Milliken, which was really awesome to hear them come in and do live entertainment with their show. We also had the Battle of the Bands, which was held at the Army and Navy this year. We had, did have a few bands drop out, so it was just a sudden death. The winners were the Butter Tart Syndicate, which is a great name. Unfortunately, they aren't together anymore. Then we opened the Valentine's Raffle. So the Valentine's Raffle was a big raffle that we did. We had three artists donate three very expensive paintings to be raffled off to help us raise more funds for our operating. We, we do pretty good with our program funding, but the operating funds, just to keep the office running, are a little bit low. So we did do several fundraisers this year. That Valentine's Raffle, with the support of the community, brought in seventy-one hundred dollars. So we were extremely grateful for all the support for that. Art Splash happens every year at the Black Rock. That's one of my favorite events. It's always very well-attended. We had over seventy-two artists submit work, and over twelve hundred people visit the show. So we are looking forward to Art Splash again this year, or the upcoming year. April, May, just mostly shows at the gallery, workshops at the gallery, and then, of course, May, we do our, our gala with the firefighters. That's happened. I think that's our third year with the firefighters. It's a great partnership. We raised sixteen hundred, three hundred and sixty-six dollars at that gala, and four thousand of that was given to the firefighters. The Salvaged Art Project, which we do in June, it was the second year running. I'm not sure if that program's gonna continue or not, but that was a really well-received project. The Salvaged Art Project is, is artists getting together and making really amazing art out of objects that were salvaged off the beaches mainly. We had Kevin Chongkey did a video for that. That video will be up on the Salvaged Art site shortly. I'm not a techie person, so I'm just waiting for somebody to come in and actually put that on the site for us. Summer Festival, it's, well, Summer Festival is the, is in the summertime, obviously, stating what's obvious. That's the biggest part of the Summer Festival is we normally bring in Ballet Victoria. Ballet Victoria is really excited to come here every year, and they actually come and perform here for us for a very small amount, considering they bring in a troupe of eight plus two support people. Let's see, where are we at here? I'll just kind of go through it a little bit quickly. We did do a, a pottery show this year in partnership with Carla Strickland. That was a two-week pottery show, and during the two weeks at the Orange Shore Gallery, they sold over four thousand dollars' worth of pottery, and they gave thirty percent of those proceeds to the gallery. So that was over twelve hundred dollars that they donated back to the gallery to help us keep going. The Cultural Heritage Festival, which was the festival we were celebrating fifty-five years of PRAS. We ran into quite a lot of hitches during that festival, so we were constantly running and trying to, like, something would happen and that would fall apart, and we'd have to find something else to replace it with. The same with our performers. We did have one really good performance, which was over in a tatu with the hoop dancer Jade Janail. This was the second time we brought him in. He's a professional indigenous hoop dancer, and he can actually dance with thirteen hoops at one time, which is pretty amazing. And he, he actually dances for like forty-five minutes and doesn't stop, so it's, I don't even know how he manages that. We did have a founder's luncheon during the Cultural Heritage Festival, and we actually had two women who came from a distance, and one of them was a part of the art society in nineteen eighty-four, and the other one was part of the art society in nineteen ninety, as well as like Marla Thursk and Mark Penny and Miles Morrison, who have all been a part of the art society for thirty-some-odd years. Oh, yeah, we did, we partnered also with Thornton Creek Hatchery for the Bullhead Derby again. And that's always a very successful and well-received event. And we were able to donate, was it just over three hundred dollars, or? Yeah, to, to the Thornton Creek Hatchery. Yeah, so that was pretty awesome. That was, yeah, good partnership. Right now, at the gallery, we have a twelve-by-twelve squared fundraiser show going on. This was kind of my last effort of doing a fundraiser for this year. Fifty percent of those proceeds of sales are going to the gallery and fifty percent to the artists. The artists have been really awesome, stepped up, brought in some really beautiful pieces, and the sales have been going really well. That show's on until October twenty-fifth. If you haven't been in, go in and take a look. Our AGM is coming up on November twenty-third, three to five PM at the Army and Navy. I will leave this for the district. That can go up in. We will be doing a slide presentation about everything that has happened over this past year, so if you're interested, that's a good time to come and see and participate. We will be looking for new board members as well. And I will more or less be handing over the keys to Robert to fill in the executive director. Director position. And I'll remain as a member of the art society and a volunteer, but I will not be taking on any role. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Kelly. Much appreciated, all the hard work that you've put into the Orange Door Gallery and PRAS. It's become a habit with me to attend the opening shows now and really enjoy them. Definitely recommend the 12 by 12 show that's on right now. And, yeah, any questions for Kelly? Comments? Counselor Noel?
Yeah, I'll just chime in, Kelly. Again, for everybody in town that goes down there, you just listed how much work you've done. You've been doing that for three years and you've been doing it with a lot of passion. So, you know, it's just a big thank you from everybody for what you're doing. And it's only really alive because of your commitment and, you know, your, every $383.83 that you can get, you're looking for it and, you know, and I think everybody's, it's so helpful and you're, what do you call them? Their predecessor or is it the other way around?
The other way around.
Anyways, and Robert, obviously, I haven't met him, but I imagine he's got lots of support. There's a great group down there, so wonderful. Because really, you shouldn't be around your organization. So I think it's a real testament to what you guys have done.
Thank you.
Maybe Robert can come up and get officially introduced?
Yeah, that would be great.
No. Yeah, no worries.
So for you, those of you who don't know, this is Robert Guzdal. He has been the treasurer of the art society for the past two years. So when I decided I was going to be leaving, it took me about three months of talking to him to talk him into actually taking the job on. So after a lot of thought and a lot of conversation, he has decided he will take the job on, which I'm really excited about because he will definitely bring some new energy to the art society. So feel free to say if it works.
Well, thank you. What a kind introduction. I'm super excited to be stepping into the position. I'm stepping in with a lot of support from Kelly, which is kind of the only way that I feel like confident in stepping into this. So I'm really excited, excited to maybe collaborate with a lot of local community groups, other partners. So, yeah, I'm just so thrilled, so excited and I have a lot, a big, big shoes to fill, you know? So I'm going to do my best.
Great, thank you, Robert. Thanks, Kelly. Next up is a delegation from Thornton Creek Hatchery. Dave Hurwitz, manager, will be presenting.
Hello, everybody. Sorry, I'm loud. I just wanted to really, thanks for the opportunity for me to come down and thank you, the district's Yuculit staff, mayor, council, everybody who's helped support the hatchery. Societies make our town so rich. It's that simple. We did have, as Kelly said, the last event we did was the Bullhead Derby. Over 60 kids came, it was second year. Captain Hook gave out eight rods and reels. Beautiful day, kids having fun on the dock with their family. And that's sort of where I come from. That's my territory and it's great to see. Yeah, and I'm super grateful to Barb with the rec department helping out through advertising and life jackets and Kevin down at the dock is super supportive, super grateful. Anyways. Second year, I have not sent thank you cards to the, for the donations from the mortgage tax because I was told to stop doing that. So that's why I'm here. I'm super grateful. I really mean it. And the money that comes in from the mortgage tax is a huge addition to our paltry contract. But here's what's exciting, and this is how, you know, this is how you get ahead in life, leveraging. And this is, I'm really excited to say that three years ago, the Department of Fisheries and Oceans sent out independent engineering firms to look at every hatchery in BC and the Yukon and they graded them on all these different metrics. Obviously, our success, survival rate, the amount of different rivers we work on. But the other metrics included education, science, the fact that we maintain the facility and our partnerships. And the fact that our town is one of our partners is a huge thing. So this is the second year of the infrastructure upgrades, which it makes me want to cry because when I got the job 12 years ago, they were talking about shutting this place down and they've sunk in about $900,000. This, the hatchery now has fixed the dam, fixed all the pipes, we're set up for climate change, we've expanded our rearing capacity. It's actually great for staff because it's not like going to be a pneumonia factory for me anymore. There's heat and there's, they're actually putting a generator in because every year the power goes out for like two months and then Mosaic will eventually fix it. So, you know, our thermal recovery room is a tarp around a small heater, you know? So this is pretty exciting and it's going to allow us to ensure that, you know, the hatchery is set up for at least the next 50 years. And it's going to be a great place to work, huge increase in our biosecurity. But I really mean it. It's because of all the partners and support we get from the public and from our town, especially from the First Nations that we partner with. We work in Tleukwet, Tokwad and Yuclotha Territory, they've all been supportive and we've been training Tleukwet for the past year. But it's a super exciting thing. Now, subsequent to that, the only sort of negative thing is, in case you have heard, the hatchery's been closed this fall because unfortunately, we emptied the place out by July 3rd so they could start and they didn't start till August 11th. So the crew is still, I feel like I'm doing brain surgery in a war zone right now. So we had to delay taking eggs. We had, I did some hillbilly setup for incubation that, you know? Anyways, so we're still doing our thing. Hopefully it will be done at the end of the month. But what I'm asking, I want to ask for the district of Yuculit, that in the spring, I'm hoping to have an open house with all of our partners in attendance, including DFO, to showcase all these upgrades for the facility. I'm really excited about it. It's going to allow the hatchery to continue to enhance fish, do stock assessment, provide education and partner with other groups. And we are a big training facility as well. Anyways, I really mean it. I didn't bring my fedora, but tip of the hat to y'all. I really mean it. I'm very grateful. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dave. Do you have a date yet for the spring open house?
No, and if it's got feds involved, it'll probably be a month late, the way things are going. But, yeah, I want to, I definitely will keep abreast of any of this and I've talked to Josie and George Johns, who have also provided support for the hatchery in different ways. And it was actually DFO that was surprised when I said I wanted to have an event and they thought that'd be great because I'd like to pump their tires too. But it was cool that, you know, there was only two hatcheries chosen in Vancouver and for these upgrades, they were one of them. So it's pretty exciting. And like I said, it set the place up for the future. It's really exciting.
And do you know what the other hatchery was?
The Gwatni Hatchery, it's up on the Nimpish. So, yeah, Nimpish River, near Port McNeil.
And can you tell us a little bit about bears this summer?
Yeah, I can tell you that they don't like excavators, dump trucks and so it's been, it's actually, we've had to be close to the public because of all the work that's going on and probably all the swearing I've been doing going, when's the water hooked up? I told you September 15th. So they, yeah, but, no, with all the work going on, we can't have visitors, unfortunately. Like I say, the drop dead date for me, when we planned this a year ago, was September 15th and we're already 31 days past that. So, and it's going to be the end of the month. So usually the salmon run and the bears are done by early November, but we're still going to try and squeak some school groups in. I'm hoping that the big machines will be done. The rez brings school groups to us. We have the Rangers booked in, the Junior Rangers come every year and the Living Off the Land class as well. So I'm really hoping by hook or by crook, maybe I'll pull a spark plug or something, shut them down for a minute and we can have some kids in. But, yeah, so not a lot of bear activity in the day. You want to hear a bear story? Well, we have an electric fence, right? This was a big thing that, when I started the job, CBT helped fund this because it was getting out of control at the hatchery, as you know, and someone was attacked and that was another reason at the time Allen Timberlands wanted to bar visitorship to the hatchery and fought really hard for that. So anyways, they had to unhook the electric fence to do some plumbing one day and they forgot to hook it up and we had a bear in the hatchery last week. So luckily, it didn't take any of the fish we were in holding, wrecked all the lids and the containers. And like I said, you wouldn't want to have kids around when I was screaming my head off the next day. So anyways, electric fence is working again. And, but, yeah, so we see the odd bear, but generally the noise and all the trucks coming and going has pushed them off to other creeks. There's definitely lots of bears around. There's a mom and three cubs, which is a great sign. When you see three cubs, that was good feeding last year. Yeah. Anyway, so they're there. They just got the earplugs in.
Any questions or comments for Dave? Okay, thank you for your presentation. We look forward to the spring open house.
Thank you very much.
All right. Island Health has canceled, correct? So next up will be a delegation from the Wild Pacific Trail. Do we have anybody here or someone on Zoom? This was one of the late items, correct?
Yes, through the mayor. I do not see the delegate on Zoom or in the room at the moment.
Okay, so maybe we'll come back to that one and see if somebody shows up. You want to, you want to talk about? Okay, go for it.
Hello, your worship counselors. I'm Mark Mafferty, temporarily in the chambers here on behalf of the Raincoast Education Society. Very grateful for the support that we received last year and in many previous years. The work that we do here in Yuculit represents a portion of what we do. Our organization is regional in focus. So really what that boils down to for us is kind of half the work we do in Yuculit, half in Tofino and then a bunch of extra that we try to, you know, direct our attention to the outlying communities. We do a little bit of work in Banfield, a little bit of work in a Howesit. And of course, the work that is probably most relevant to the folks in the room and certainly that we come and ask for funding, our youth education programs, our Raincoast Field School program, front and center. We've got two full-time instructors. They've been going like gangbusters. I think last year we did 183 field trips and those are offered to all of the students at the Yuculit Elementary as well as Waken Inish Community School. We try as hard as we can to work with the Hartwood Collective as well. We try and work with the Banfield School. We try and go to Howesit, work with the high school as well as the elementary school there. Those trips are all free, offered at no charge. And I think at this point, it's pretty safe to say that at least in Tofino and Yuculit, they've really become part of the fabric of how the educational program's delivered. Of course, what the field school program does is take the BC science curriculum and adapt it for an outdoor setting. So as much as we'd like to sort of take credit for everything that we offer, it comes right out of the province's own mandated guidelines, like this is what you got to learn in grade three, this is what you got to learn in grade four. And we try to make it a little bit more, maybe not more exciting, but try to connect students with it because of course, if you read something in a textbook and you have that, that sort of excitement, you're going to get excited by it. But a lot of students don't necessarily have that background or that spark and then all of a sudden you take them to the beach, you take them to the bog, you take them to the hatchery and they get excited and all of a sudden, it's not an abstract concept. It's a fish that you're looking at or that you're releasing in the creek. It's, you know, something that maybe is important to you and has been important to your family and now the whole school's out there and your whole class is out there and you know, this tree or whatever. So program's been running really well. We're super happy for the support that we receive, tons of different organizations in the community. I mean, just some of the folks that are presented here. We've worked with PRAS, we've worked with Redfish, we've worked with the Aquarium. We've, yeah, just, it's fantastic. It really, it takes a village. So we're thrilled. I brought this with me because I was supposed to put it up on a light pole, but I've got it here. If anyone's around tomorrow, 6:00 to 10:00 at the Yuculit Brewery, we're celebrating our 25th anniversary, which is a bit of a milestone for us. Yeah, that's wild. And I'm really excited and I've been talking to some folks that were involved in the early days of the rez and I honestly don't think that too many of them ever thought that the organization would be here after 25 years, let alone thriving and, you know, in a position to offer what we do with the support that we get. So thanks to everyone and if you're around tomorrow, come on out. We've, we're also running a silent auction and it's online. So none of that sort of like high-pressure bid now. You can go check it out. We've got lots of great items, mostly from folks in the community that have donated beautiful art, wonderful experiences. And, yeah, hopefully we'll see some folks at the brewery tomorrow and if not, we'll see you around, we'll see your kids around, we'll be there. All right.
Is there a cost to get in tomorrow?
There is. It's a nice round $39 for the ticket. There'll be some food included. There'll be beer, but the beer's not included. Live music, yeah, and it's a fundraiser. So it's, it's money that goes right back into our programs.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Mark? Counselor Noel?
Yeah, Mark, again, you articulated it perfectly. Every kid in town loves your program and I'm glad that your energy just keeps on pushing you off till tomorrow. So it's awesome and it's noticed and appreciated. So thank you and I'm glad no one's getting too weird about the conflict here because there isn't a conflict. You're a community member, you're up here representing a certain audience in the community. So thanks for going up there.
Thanks to all you guys, CBT, Hatchery, Redfish, Aquarium.
It's amazing how many of you work together. It's awesome.
Yeah, yeah, no, it really is.
Okay, thanks, Mark.
Worship, if you don't mind, there's a couple in the room here. I don't see Redfish. Are you? Yeah, you are.
Okay, well, yeah, my next, my next question was, are there any other representatives from local community groups present who did not make the agenda list and wish to present an update? If you'd like to, okay, please do.
Hello?
Hello.
I made a little list of things, but my name is Megan Francis and I work for Redfish Restoration Society and I'm here to just give an overview of what we've been up to this year. I need this to be closer to me. I'm also not an excellent public speaker. Okay, so I'm Megan. I've just taken a new position with Redfish. I've been there for 10 years and I'm, I've shuffled over. I'm now the Director of Education and Outreach. So this is new for me. I'm excited and I feel like I know most of you here. I'm not sure if you know me though. Yes, so I'm here to report on Redfish's happenings. This microphone is a little weird. Do I get close? Do I stay back? I get close, but how? Things around here. Okay, I feel very weird. Can I lift it up? Okay. Thank you. So this is Redfish's 30th year, which is crazy. There's so many big birthdays this year. It's the 25th and then also the 55th and then the 25th and then our 30th. So we were, I think we had big dreams of having ongoing celebrations throughout the year, but the year got away from us and now we're just not doing too much. We're having a small party next Friday, which is open to the public. We're just putting it out at the last minute, which seems to be the theme today. So, yeah, our 30th year and for 27 of them, we were Central West Coast Forest Society. We changed our name to Redfish for the hopes that people honestly could remember our name because it was a bit of a mouthful before. And another big thing for us in January 2024, we purchased the Murray's Grocery and was in between the general store. And we've been using it now for almost two years as our office and then downstairs, we turned into a small retail space and event space and we've been doing lots of events. And we've been doing lots of events, um, but it's about to change form once again. Um, so this twenty-twenty-six, we're hoping to do a small renovation in the building and uh, turn it into more of an interpretive center uh, with um, a boardroom and a place that can be used by both visitors and locals alike. So we're hoping to do rotating exhibits, art shows, workshops, events. Um, we're gonna shrink all the show, store down into a small gift shop. We're gonna keep our coffee shop. And yeah, we're really hoping to become a place of learning and inspiration and um, sort of a hub for everyone to use. Uh, so I can talk more about that forever, but I have to move on because I'm talking about all of Redfish. Um, so we host, uh, in terms of um, the renovation in the space, we're currently calling it the Stewardship Center, the Redfish Stewardship Center. Um, we hosted an open house in Ukulit this last month. Um, and we had tons of feedback from people who came by. Um, and then we're having another informative dinner and a tattoo in a couple of weeks. And then another one um, for Klowkua at First Nation in Tinwiss in another few weeks. Um, and then in terms of restoration as a whole, um, I'm not sure how familiar everyone is with us, but our priority is on habitat restoration and watersheds that support um, salmon populations. This is where it gets a little bit lengthy here. Um, this was probably our largest year for restoration work. Our biggest project was in the Tranquil River, which is just about um, gosh, how far is it, Dave? Help me, from Tofino. Thirty clicks, thank you. Uh, I think this is our eighth year working in the watershed and is the final year of in-stream work that we did. So we did, built twelve in-stream structures, two of which were the largest that we've ever been built. And they're now in action, lots of use from the fish. And for now, um, we're just taking a step back from the river and we're doing a little bit of riparian work right now, uh, brushing and removing cones from trees that have been planted by our, our organization. Uh, we're doing some fall escapement swims um, through D, DFO contracts at Clemens River and Nament River again this year. And we're doing some for Kennedy Lake Saukai as well. We just did two Beaver Stop um, installations along Highway Four, just near Four Lanes. So the Beaver Stop um, uh, infrastructure, I guess. The idea is that it prevents the beavers from building their dams directly on the culvert, of which there were two, uh, one blocking the culvert, which floods the highways and makes it unsafe. So the idea is that the beavers can still dam it up, but it like pushes it back off of the culvert so that they can create a dam. But it protects the culvert, that's a lot of information there. Um, we're doing some subcontracts for Parks Canada right now. Maintenance on the Up Sheik Tashi Trail, um, removing invasives. And the Schooner Dunes again this year. We just printed a new periodical to which talks a little bit more about what we're doing. And I brought some for everybody to hand out. Um, we've also gone beyond our coast this year. Um, so we've been supporting some other coastal nations with their restoration priorities and capacity building. We just um, did some guardian training and restoration planning in Bella Bella for Health Lake First Nation. We worked with Malahat First Nation on a knowledge exchange this year. We did a restoration project this summer on Salt Spring with Key Learning Center, turning an agricultural and dog-walking field back into a wetland, which is the beginning of a larger, long-term project to bring elders back to their traditional territory on Salt Spring. Um, early this year, we completed a bunch of landslide and slope stability work in Heshgrit Harbor with the Heshgrit First Nation. We built thirty new modified brush layers, um, staked almost a thousand willows and planted over two thousand conifers on Latin slides for um, slope stability and um, Tislow, the deposition of sediment into salmon-bearing rivers. Oops, I've lost my place. Can everyone hear me? Okay, is everyone following along? Okay, great. Um, okay, we also did some in-stream work in Bedwell River with the Howset First Nation and the Clockwood Wilderness Lodge this year, as well as on Coke Bottle Creek, uh, removing shake block waste. Um, I have a lot to say about kelp work in Clockwood and Barclay Sound. Um, I'm not, yeah, so as far as monitoring goes, this is an update from my coworker Emily, who's very thorough. Um, so for monitoring, we began working with Ukulithat First Nation and Tokwatt Territories in twenty-twenty-one. So we've been annually monitoring since then in Barclay Sound. And this is to track the trends over, in these ecosystems using um, drones. We're also mapping and using machine learning tools to analyze the change in kelp canopies over time. And the information that we get from that, from the monitoring efforts, will directly inform restoration actions that the nations wish to pursue. For example, we can see where restoration should be prioritized, as well as determine restoration site selection that might achieve the greatest success for restored, restored kelp resilience over time. As far as kelp restoration work goes, um, we've begin in, begin, begun, begun a pilot project in collaboration with Tokwatt Nation in twenty-twenty-three. And Redfish has been trialing different kelp restoration techniques with them. We've partnered with the Bamfield-based company, West Coast Kelp, who operate a small kelp nursery and provide us with kelp seed for restoration. And the pilot project with Tokwatt has just wrapped up with successes and interesting results that can now be applied to a second iteration of restoration trials. Now we're waiting for new federal and provincial permits, seek funding, and enter the next phase of restoration with Tokwatt. We've also secured funds and are in final permitting stages to begin a new kelp restoration project with Klowkua at First Nation. We're hoping to get infrastructure in the water in the next few months. Next steps for our kelp restoration project expansions will include the addition of new remote camera capture technology to monitor biodiversity benefits associated with creating kelp habitat. That's everything, I believe, that Redfish has been up to. Um, does anyone have any questions for me?
Thanks, Megan. Does anyone have a question for Megan? Councillor Maffaty?
Oh, you kinda glossed over the kelp stuff. No, I'm just kidding. When's the, when's the party on Friday?
Oh, the party um, is on the twenty-fourth. And we're just, we have a band and um, uh, Slactide String Band is gonna do the mini square dance. And that's gonna be at um, Robin and Austin's uh, Boathouse or the Boatyard. So there's, it's a two-part party. We haven't um, put the post out yet, considering it's next Friday. Um, you also have some postering to do, so. Uh, but the, yes, I don't know exactly when it starts, but twenty-fourth, part one at um, I thi- I think it's called the Boatway now, as a venue?
Is it research?
No, not research. Um, the property just on Eber Road, um, that is, yes. Okay, right beside Alder Park. Um, so that will go until ten, and then there's an after-party, part two, at the Army Navy, which will just have a DJ. And this is just um, a party. There's nothing in, um, educational about it. But there will be our annual general, our annual general um, AGM and AGP is what we're calling it. So our, our AGM happens and then, Megan, you can probably help me out here a little bit. And then followed by um, more of like a gratitude and thank you to all the people who support our organization. That's a free event. Um, yeah, and that, and that is like kind of an invitation-based thing to all of our supporters and partners and collaborators. So you'll, and that's December second. But we have, again, not sent out invitations for that either yet.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments, questions?
Couple. Um, you know, thanks, Megan. You're doing wonderful, and I think you're gonna do great at the role. And you know, you other, always underestimate yourself. And I think that, that one of the big things that Megan's taken on is she's gonna be championing this in, uh, Stewardship Center. And uh, you know, just through the, 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 the gravity or the amount, I think you've been, how much you've been successful for on your grants and aids to date? I believe it's just over four hundred thousand?
Yeah, we've put, we have four hundred and fifty thousand dollars um, for the renovation. And then we are submitting again to the redip um, grant application, which is due at the end of the month. And.
We gotta be hopeful.
Who knows, hopeful?
Yeah, so it's not just a little changing a couple of light bulbs out there. We're doing a significant uh, upgrade downstairs. And we can only hope that half of that traffic going to the aquarium kinda heads up to the interpretive center. So I think it's gonna be a, a great addition to that part of town.
I think we would hope for half of it. Probably with sixty thousand numbers, it seems a lot.
We'd do for two, one tickets or something.
But it's exciting to be a part of Murray's History. Reg just came in and shared the whole history of um, um, the Murray's Building and shared photos. And yeah, I hope that through this building, we'll be able to share a lot of that history as well. And yeah, it's a new direction, but it kinda feels fitting like as the building itself has sort of gone out and up and down and out and up. And then we are just going to do another, you know, addition, not addition, but um, yeah, just another version, which feels good to work in an old building.
That's great. I did just sign a letter of support for your grant application yesterday. So thank you so much. You're welcome. Yeah, good luck.
Okay, thank you so much. And I know on behalf of Redfish, they thank this entire community for being so amazing. And, and it's so wonderful that so many nonprofits and organizations can thrive in this community. It's, it's like very special.
Great, okay. Thank you for presenting. Are there any other representatives from low, yes, Patricia? I was hoping you would go up.
Good evening, everyone, mayor and council and all the other, everybody else. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I realize that we must have neglected to respond to the invitation. Alexandra and I communicated about it, but I guess we didn't decide who would actually respond. So anyway, I'm here. Um, being late to speak, though, gives me the chance to highlight the help of several groups that have spoken earlier. Since May, the Seaview Seniors Housing Society has held a luncheon in June and September. And thanks to the grant and aid provided by the district and for allowing us to continue to use the funds that we were unable to use before. Um, the funds are supplemented by the gracious donation of soup from several different restaurants. We've had the help of, of quite a few. We've had Howlers and Hartwood and um, and Third, which, oh, actually, um, actually, um, uh, Howlers did twice. And the funds are supplemented by the gracious time and donation of soup by several um, of our local volunteers. Um, we provide the ingredients and they cook them. So, so um, like the legendary stone soup, we feed many with the help of many. Um, but I also wanted to highlight the help of the Pacific Rim Hospice Society. There are many initiatives that they are helping us with and the, and we are collaborating with them. Through their Better at Home programs, they're providing funds for the desserts for our monthly luncheons. And our luncheons also give them an opportunity to keep the local seniors aware of the services that Better at Home offers. And we're also working with them to establish a support group for local caregivers. And we're donating space at Forest Glen for them to meet. And another summer successful accomplishment is the beach on Large Street that provides a resting spot for seniors. The, the seniors at Forest Glen requested it, but uh, I noticed when I was driving by last week, there were two people, two gentlemen who are not residents of Forest Glen. They were sitting there chatting away. So, so what benefits Forest Glen residents also benefits others. And for this bench, we want to thank the Clockwood Biosphere Trust and the District of Ukulit for their help. The Co-op Gas Bar donated their fuel-up-for-good-day to Forest Glen to help with the scooter shed that we're hoping to build at Forest Glen for the storage of the electric scooters. B.C. Housing, excuse me. While B.C. Housing does subsidize our operations, they will not provide funding for any, any extra sheds. So to build a shed, we require the help of and the kindness of others. So we're still attempting to raise enough money to finance a shed. We have, we have some, but we don't have quite enough yet. So reflecting on what we have heard tonight reminds us, as several of you have mentioned, that the community grows strong when we work together to support each other. So in addition to the activities I have mentioned, a great deal of our time this past year, this is not a, this is a questionable thing. A great deal of our time this past year has been devoted to negotiations with Island Health over our designation as an assisted living facility. Because they are changing the criteria of assisted living, there we no longer fulfill their requirements. So the, the requirements for more staffing would have exceeded our budget, and Island Health is unable to provide the level of staffing that they require in order to run a assisted living facility. So we have been deregistered as assisted living, and, but we will continue as supportive housing only. But we have been assured that any residents requiring home support will continue to receive the same level of care that they would receive if they lived anywhere on the west coast area. So this is an area that we still need to make sure is adhered to. With the help of hospice, Clockwood Biosphere Trust, and the district's recreational department and others, we continue to keep seniors safe and healthy and engaged. And given the opportunity, seniors can be assets in the community. So we are grateful for any initiatives that allow us to continue to be part of the greater community. And we appreciate all help that you provide for us to continue to be engaged. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia. Uh, are there any plans for Phase Two for Forest Glen?
No, we still have plans from ages ago, but um, but there's no, there's, I think maybe about four or five years ago, they looked at it in greater detail and it was decided that, that there wasn't the financial backing for it from B.C. Housing. And, and so it's, it's not, um, it's nothing, nothing is happening there.
Not, not feasible?
No.
Okay. Any questions for Patricia? Well, thank you for your, for your report. Are there any other representatives that would like to speak? Are there any representatives on Zoom?
Thank you, mayor, there are not.
So the Wild Pacific Trail did not show up? Nope. Okay. All right, seeing no others, we're now moving on to question period. This is an opportunity for the public to ask questions and comment on matters within council's jurisdiction. Representations about bylaws that council is prohibited from holding a public hearing on or bylaws that were subject to a public hearing are not permitted at this time. Are there any audience members that wish to address council? I think most of you have addressed us already. Are there any members of the public attending by Zoom or telephone that wish to address council?
Thank you, mayor, there are not.
And have we received any emails to communityinput@ukulit.ca?
Thank you, mayor, we have not.
All right, then I will move that the October sixteenth, twenty-twenty-five regular committee of the whole meeting be adjourned at five eighteen.
Thank you all for coming. That's great.